Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three, Special City Council Meeting. Now is time for roll call and determination of quorum. You're not coming in?
Can I get, can I get the IT grab before you go?
Yep. I broke it already. Oh, hit that one. I thought it was out. Okay. Are you in, Heidi?
I am. Okay, Beeberdorff? Maher? Roberts?
Here.
Stroman?
Here.
Pettigrew? Seacrest? Lehman? Hamm? Evans? Roseland. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now is time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is time for the adoption of the agenda.
Who's to adopt?
Have them, a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Now is time for general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. No items will be added to the agenda per state statute for special meetings. I don't see anybody that has any comments, so I will close that. We will move on to non-consent items, items one and two, and I will turn it over to our mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, City Council. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight to share the budget, at least the proposed budget, for two thousand and twenty-four. A couple of changes before we get diving in here. For starters, we've never presented it this way before. We put a booklet together for you, and what I hope this booklet does is, is it shares the priorities of the city, where those funds go. I hope that you will really have an opportunity to dig into this book tonight. The objective is to share a little bit about the budget about for two thousand and twenty-four, as well as some of those priorities to make sure that you have a good overview. And then, of course, I hand the budget and put it into your hands, and you take it from there. So it is my honor to be before you all today. Obviously, I came in very late in this budget process. I came in the ninth inning of the budget process. That's just the way our elections work. So you're getting a little bit of my priorities in here, but there's, there's some other stuff that's carried over between multiple administrations. So it really takes a lot of effort to put this together. I want to quick give a, a thank you to the department directors, and in particular, Daniel Ainsley, our finance director. He also came in a little later in the budget process. He was hired and came on in April. That's pretty late in the municipal calendar year, but he's worked very hard, and I appreciate his effort. Also appreciate the effort of the mayor's office staff. They've been tremendous, as well as our human resources team, really helped up, helped, stepped up to help develop this book that you have in front of you today. So those, with those out of the way, it's just important to know this is a collaborative effort, as are all things within the city. And what I hope is that the information that we share tonight reflects the priorities that you have shared with me. I've met with all of you. We've had conversations about priorities for two thousand and twenty-four, and I've tried to take that into consideration in the budget. So this is not purely the mayor's budget. It is our budget that I'm presenting to you. I hope you feel like it honored you, honored your requests, most of all, met the needs of the citizens of Rapid City. The first couple of pages, you'll see, by the way, so in lieu of a PowerPoint, we're going to walk through this booklet. I'm not going to read it line for line. That's what my message is for, but it's there as a reference to talk about. And so I, I will call on things from time to time within the booklet. The bulk of my address here tonight is found in a message, a three-page message in this booklet, so you can go back and find out what was he actually talking about, and that's what that is. But moving on to two thousand and twenty-four priorities, well here, I think it's first important to state this. There is no place like Rapid City. Rapid City is a special place to call home, and really, one of the objectives we have is to make the most of the opportunities that we have, but keep what makes us special. And I hope that as we think about the future, think about where this city is moving, that is something we all need to keep in mind, because this budget follows the vision and values of our community and, and in the guardrails of the rights of the people to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. So we want this to be a safe place to raise a family, grow a business, and enjoy life, because South Dakota is where possibility lives, and Rapid City serves as a shining example. So this budget really represents our desire for peace and prosperity for the people of Rapid City. So in the two thousand and twenty-four priorities, you'll see a page that says, noted that, it says, "We have kind of five priorities to categorize. We have a safer community, a healthy economy, a vibrant community, a high-performing government, and hometown spirit." I think these priorities are important, and they're reflected in this. A vision. Well, a vision is a picture of what's possible, and I've talked a lot about this. This is what folks elected me for, and again, this budget follows a vision. So I hope, and this is based on our, all of our feedback, that Rapid City will strive to be a community where people prosper, where families flourish, children thrive, neighbors are respected, freedoms are enjoyed, adventures are taken, beauty abounds, our economy grows, our government serves, and hope lives. And how do we do that? That's where we go to our guiding principle. And with our guiding principles, this is, this is something that we, as a city government, the organization of the city, this is the culture we are trying to build, because to best serve the citizens, to get the most out of the citizens and taxpayer dollars, we need to make sure that we have a vibrant and healthy culture. So if you want to know the kind of culture that I'm looking for, this is what we hire for, what we develop for, and how we find out whether someone's a good fit on Team Rapid City, it is this, which is built on trust that we do what's right. Safety, that we take care. Respect, we model civility. Service, we are here to help. Clarity, we avoid confusion. Excellence, we bring our best. And teamwork, we serve together. So when you're talking about anywhere you ever want to go, including a budget, it always begins with who you are, why you're here, and where you're going. I hope that this booklet helps present that information to you in a clear and concise fashion, not just to you, but to the people of Rapid City that you represent. A few things I want to bring up is Rapid City is really getting on the map. We have made a number of best-of lists, and we put five of these in here to highlight, and I should, I'll go to that for the... Sorry, folks at home, I haven't been scrolling on the PDF, but we made five best-of lists I think are really notable. For starters, and you all know this, we're the fastest-growing city in the Midwest, fifty-fourth overall in the United States. That's according to the U.S. Census Bureau. That's a reality for us. We have, the Wall Street Journal says that we are number one in emerging housing market. We have a Newswire report that says we're one of the top cities for veteran entrepreneurs, ninth overall. The Milken Institute says we're seventeenth overall best-performing small city. At schooleroo.com, which is kind of funny, but this, but it's a great website. It lists, it ranks the best cities to raise a family, and we are twenty-fifth under, overall, which greatly aligns with the priorities we have. We want to be a safer place to raise a family. We want to be a greatly-run city, and we want a vibrant community for all. What I hope you understand is this, you have a lot to be proud of, but Rapid City is at a crossroads. We have a community that is growing. We know it, we feel it, we experience it, yet we also want to keep that thing that makes us special. The next page, we have the latest economic indicators from Elevate Rapid City, and this is important to note as, before we dive into the budget, because we need to know how we're doing. We have an unemployment rate that's one point nine percent and a labor particip- labor force participation rate of sixty-seven point five-six percent. You can see that so far, about halfway through the year, we've had nine hundred and seventy-five building permits. That's worth a hundred and eighty-one million, point nine million dollars. That's halfway through the year. Things are booming in Rapid City. You, we continue to see affordability of real estate go up and up. As you notice on that scorecard, we have median list price for five seven seven zero one, oh-two, and oh-three, just for reference sakes. We see the average wages are going up as well. That's across the board. Every business has, has seen an increase in the cost of labor, and we see that reflected here. So folks are making more. Unfortunately, they have to spend more as well, which is also the, the story of the city. So not out about it, though, a lot of great things are happening in Rapid City, and so let's talk about the budget. The total proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-four, and this includes the general fund and all enterprise funds altogether, is two hundred and sixty-one million dollars, three hundred and fourteen, three hundred and fourteen thousand, eighty-five dollars. That's a, that's a big number. We have on, on this slide that's before you and on the page, that broken up. We see that the majority of that comes from sales tax. The general fund, which often pays for kind of our day-to-day operations, is coming in at ninety-nine million, eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, and it reflects our shared priorities of safer neighborhoods, a healthy economy, vibrant community, high-performing government, and hometown spirits, but it also reflects the reality of a rapidly-growing community. Revenues are strong, and so are expenses. So the story for Rapid City is the same as, as it is for all families in Rapid City. They might be making more, but they're paying a whole lot more as well, and we are no different. Now, I want to talk a little bit about sales tax. The revenue for the general fund is projected to be about ninety-four million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, with the bulk of that coming from sales tax revenue. Now, sales tax fuels the general fund, which helps deliver essential services to our residents. Now, our dependence upon sales tax presents us with challenges and opportunities. The challenge is, we ride the wave of consumer spending, which can be inconsistent. This wave can rise or fall based on forces outside of our control, and that's the challenge for us. When times are really good, it's good for us. When people are trying to save pennies and not spending money as much, or not spending money in the city limits of Rapid City as much, we will feel it as well. On the other hand, we do have the opportunity to foster a business-friendly environment that promotes a stronger and diverse economy. This is the rising tide that lifts all boats as it creates forward momentum. It creates better-paying jobs. It helps keep taxes in check, and it provides more opportunities for families. Now, sales tax, I have a, we got a note here. Slide over there. We got a slide. We actually have a, a chart here that talks about the distribution of sales tax, and I think it's important to know where this kind of revenue comes from. So what we have here on the top part is, where do my tax dollars go? So the general sales tax rate for nearly all goods and services is six point two percent, and that is two percent goes to the city, and four point two percent goes to the state of South Dakota. So within that, you see that a dollar of that, or excuse me, of a hundred dollars, you'll see four dollars and twenty cents goes to the state, a dollar goes into our general fund, forty-two cents goes towards our vision fund, and fifty-eight cents goes to our capital improvement fund, which is used to fund infrastructure projects. I, we have the penny sliced up here, and you can see that, that of that, you see state sales tax is sixty-nine percent of, of what we get. The general fund's fifteen percent, capital improvement fund, nine, the vision fund, seven. We also, though, we have a BBB tax. If you don't know, that that's a, that's a tax that is for hotels and rental cars and alcohol and dining, and that it brings in another, out of a hundred dollars, a one-dollar BBB fund, and the bulk of that going towards the visitor industry, Monument, the Monument Arena, and the Summit Arena. Those are all big things. The reason that's important is because when we drive people to spend money in Rapid City, it is really good for us. So I'm going to talk to you about a priority that we have. Here's what I'm doing. I'm going to mix in priorities as we talk about finances throughout this whole time. One of the priorities that we need to have for the city of Rapid City, because whether, I guess, for better or for worse, we depend on sales tax, so here's what I'm encouraging us to do. I mean, encouraging us to ensure that Rapid City remains the regional hub for retail. That is significant, meaning when people do their shopping, that they not only live in Rapid City, but that they come to Rapid City. We know for two hundred and fifty-plus miles, we are the hub for all things, but if you live in Hermosa and you buy something on the internet, we do not get any sales tax revenue from that. So we know that that's a reality. We're not saying we're going to get rid of the internet, but what we are saying is I think that it is time that we pursue high, more high-volume retail within the city limits of Rapid City. So when we're talking about economic development, we certainly want better-paying jobs. That is, I know that's a priority for all of us. That's important. We certainly need more housing. We'll talk about that in a moment, but we definitely need people spending more money here, not just for the residents that live here, but for the whole industries around us. So there's a lot that drives our sales tax revenue. Tourism is significant. Seventeen point nine million dollars is what's expected to be put forward into our budget in two thousand and twenty-four as a, as a result of the tourism industry. We know last year, three point eight million visitors visited where we get to call home. That's a lot of people. So we want to make sure that they're spending more of their hard-earned dollars right here in Rapid City, because we have an excellent shopping experience for them. I think that is going to be a big priority for us. We also know that our sales tax often mirrors the trends in the agricultural industry, and I know it's often overlooked for Rapid City. How does the agricultural industry really impact us? Well, we are the hub, like I said, for two hundred and fifty, three hundred miles. There's no other metro area. Cheyenne, Wyoming, maybe Gillette, but it's not quite that big, but Cheyenne is closer than Sioux Falls. So for us, we are a hub. That means all of the farmers and ranchers in the rural communities around us, they come to Rapid City. They load up. They spend their money. They get their appointments taken care of, and we, we want them to. We invite them to do that. So you should know, whenever we have the opportunity to support the agricultural industry, we need to do it. It's for our own good, but also because of the great and important work that they do for the entire nation, because they provide the food that keeps us going. So I've talked about the importance of retail, talked about the importance of sales tax, because that's how we make money. It's either that or we, well, increase taxes. I don't think that's anything any of us are interested in. So what we want to do is increase the pie, have more people spending money here. That's a way that we will help generate more revenue. In addition, we will continue to have to look at our user fees to make sure that they are in alignment with the cost of goods, because quite frankly, if you're using water, the general fund, the sales taxpayer should not subsidize your water usage. You should pay for your water usage, and that water usage goes to an enterprise fund, which is a standalone fund that is designed to fund itself. So these are going to be things that we continually will look towards to have consistent income and revenue to provide the essential services for the citizens of Rapid City. Again, we're a growing community. We're not growing smaller. We, our demands are getting greater, so we have to continue to look at different ways to bring in revenue, and I'm with you. As conservative as many of you, I would prefer not to increase any taxes. Instead, what I want to do is increase spending in the city limits of Rapid City. So brings us to the next point. There's an old adage that says, "Retail follows rooftops." So the fact of the matter is, one of the big things we need to do to attract high-volume retail is more single-family housing. So as people choose to plant their roots in Rapid City, housing needs to continue to be a high priority. The scarcity in our housing market has created affordability challenges that impact us all. The good news is, we're seeing more investment in single-family developments and innovative housing solutions. Right now, thousands and thousands of housing, houses are in the works to be built in Rapid City and the surrounding area. And by the way, I'm one of those that, that is okay, that people are building houses in the surrounding area. We certainly are going to make the most of our city limits, but we certainly cheer on our neighbors around them. I just want them to come to Rapid City to spend their money. That's the big thing. You can live in another city, but come here to spend. So in addition, we're promoting increased housing inventory. The city will need to add more funding for critical infrastructure. This is why we will work together to reallocate the vision fund to better fund infrastructure, and I brought this up many times, but it's a project we're going to take on here in the near future. As a result to the feedback of many of you, certainly something I've said many times, we have to prioritize. Yes, when revenues are strong, but expenses are stronger, we have to make tough decisions. I think the vision fund has been outstanding. I think we can still do great quality-of-life projects, but I do believe that we need to allocate more funding towards infrastructure in order to facilitate the growth of housing and development in Rapid City in a good and healthy way. Currently, as you, as we stated earlier, one cent of sales tax splits forty-two percent of vision funds and fifty-eight percent to capital improvement projects. We have the opportunity to prioritize the allocation to better align with our growing needs in infrastructure. So again, more will come to, on this, but it's worth mentioning as it's critical to our future success. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about revenue and expenditures. There we go. So our expenses match the revenue anticipated at two hundred and sixty-one million and change. Three hundred and fourteen thousand is not much of change, but that's a, quite a bit. Like the rest of the country, Rapid City is not immune to the impact of inflation and the rising cost of goods and services. We've experienced increases in everything from building materials to health insurance premiums to contractors and more. We're also experiencing a rising cost in labor, which is reflected in this year's budget. The current unemployment rate, as we mentioned earlier, is one point nine percent, with the labor force participation at sixty-seven point five-six percent. Now, we often tout that that's good news, but I'm going to tell you, it's not the greatest news. A healthy unemployment rate is somewhere around three to five percent, because one point nine signals that there's not enough workforce for companies to come here. So when you're scarce, just like the housing market, when there are fewer houses and the supply and demand don't match up, the housing affordability goes up. The same is true for the cost of labor, and we've experienced that in the city of Rapid City. The reason employment costs have gone up, because the market required it to, and it required the city, last year, we made great investments, or this past year, great investments in our city employees to make sure that we're paying them a competitive wage, and we all agree, we want to pay people a competitive wage, because it's much better to keep and retain quality employees than it is to recruit and train new ones. So that unemployment rate at one point one percent, one point nine percent, creates a scarcity of available workforce, and again, it has created increases in the city's compensation plan due to market adjustments and the competition for talent. Our high-performing employees are our best investment, and our aim, again, is to pay them competitively, competitively, and also to help them make the most of their potential for the good of the city, and when they do, we all win. We see this up here. Throughout the expenses, we see that, you can see where the money goes, and this is the total overall. This includes all enterprise funds as well, but it's good to have a snapshot to say, okay, if that's the total budget, where does that money go in priorities? And I would ask you to look at that. Do you say, does that reflect the priorities of the city? And I hope you agree. It, it, it matches up pretty well. One of our goals is a high-performing government. Scroll down here. I'll leave that up here. One of our goals is a high-performing government, and it's actually a main objective for two thousand and twenty-four, is that we become more effective and more efficient, because here's the deal, and this is important. We have to get more efficient and effective as a city. The rate of expenses versus the revenue is not sustainable. We're going to have to make hard choices, and there's two things you can do. You can increase revenues, but you also have to manage expenses. So this next- So this next year, I'm committing that the city will look at ways to become more effective and more efficient while still delivering high quality services to our citizens. That's going to be a big initiative coming in so late on this budget process. Hard for me to tell you where there's redundancy or where we could do it better. But I'm going to tell you that that's something that we're going to go after. What this means is it includes reviewing our organizational structure to ensure that we have the right talent in the right seats, moving in the right direction. So we're going to take a dive into that this year. Also, because our expenses were so high, and this is important for you to note, last year, we authorized a number of positions that we're filling. But I have decided not to authorize all the positions requested this year to halt our expenses. I do believe our employees are our greatest investment. But I have concerns about the number of FTEs we're adding on without the ability to pay for them. Until we can get a handle. So I said no to quite a few positions this year while we assess and evaluate things. But I did make a couple of exceptions that I'm going to point out to you today. One of them, and you know about this, are four FTEs for the city park ranger program. I'll talk about that in just a moment. That's an initiative that I'm proposing that we'll see if you agree. And the only other one that we're adding is one for our internet crimes against children unit, ICAC unit. And this is at my request. Folks, the last four years, internet crimes against children has risen over 81%. The pandemic has been devastating to our families. What we're talking about are children who are sexually assaulted, molested, child pornography, those sort of evil, vile, disgusting things. So I decided to include it in the budget this year. That percentage is way too high. So we're sending a message by the fact that we are not adding all these other positions, but the one that we are highlighting is to protect our children and adding an FTE to that unit. Now this should be a message for those who are preying upon children, that we are committed as a city to come after you. That if you are seeking to harm our children, you will get caught. We will allocate resources. We will direct our attention towards you. And my recommendation is number one, to stop. Don't do it. Two, if you are, you should be scared because the law is coming after you. And I hope by adding this position in our budget, it sends a clear signal that in Rapid City, we care about our kids. And if you are preying upon them, you should be scared. I would ask you to stop. In fact, you can leave our city as far as I'm concerned. Think it's important when we talk about budgets that we remember that there's a human part of this that affects us all. And that doesn't maybe mean much to you when I say 81% unless it happens to someone you know or to you. So you, city council, just like me, we have a responsibility that when we know something, we have to do something. I heard that statistic and could not let it go. So I have included in, in here for that reason, because public safety is critical. I'm going to keep moving on here. So clearly, public safety is front and center in the proposed 2024 budget. Beyond the essential services provided by our outstanding fire and police departments, we have, we have a brand new initiative that will introduce city park rangers to our community. This pilot program, as I've talked to many of you about, is designed to bring a more official presence to our parks to ensure they are a safe place for all. The uniformed rangers will be empowered with code enforcement authority, equipped to look after our 1,700 acres of park space and serve as eyes and ears with a direct line to law enforcement. We will likely pilot the program focusing on the bike path in a few key parks. And if successful, we can expand it to more park space and help relieve pressure off our police so they can focus on critical areas. It's important to note that this is a pilot program. We're going to try it small, see how it goes. And if it goes well, we can expand it. If it turns out that this is a disaster, then we can take a different approach. But I'm going to tell you, here's the commitment. We need safety in our parks. And this, this runs the gamut of, I, I got a picture given to me of a huge knife about this big buried in the wood chips at Sioux Park. We've seen vandalism in our parks. We've seen drug use in our parks. We've had accidents in our parks where people have lost their lives. We've also seen other sorts of instances, and we've seen public camping, which is not allowed in our parks. And we will not allow it in our parks. I want the parks to be safe for everybody. I don't care who you are. If you are obeying the law, you are welcome in our parks. But it will, those city park rangers will be good stewards of those parks to take care of our beautiful space because a big part of what makes this community special is the green space and beauty that abounds here. But we also want to make sure that is, it is a safe space for everybody. So I'm proposing the city park ranger program for FTEs. That's the big idea. We will continue to work out details if it's approved about where it will fit. That investment's roughly $357,000, just shy of that for four FTEs, as well as their equipment and materials that they would need to get that program going. Continuing on, we're going to talk about homelessness and crisis services. And I'm going to take you to the final page. We have a great, great overview of all the departments. I'm going to ask you to read through at your own leisure about what each of those do. But for this next section, we're going to go to the final page here. There we go, or second to last page, community investments. According to a recent report, the number of homeless individuals in the United States has risen by 11% in the last year. That's one year. Since 2007, when tracking first began, the highest annual increase was 2.7%. So this is not normal, what the nation is seeing. And clearly, this major national issue, this is a major national issue, and we are not immune from the impact of homelessness in Rapid City, and it has a significant impact on our budget. The police chief indicates that we have 11 FTEs dedicated to homelessness, and this does not include the three that are funded by a grant within the police department. Our fire department responds to a significant number of calls for ambulance services, which often produce non payers and charge offs. And we know how expensive that gets as well. Many of us have had to, to see, to pass on those charge offs. Most of all, homelessness creates an unsafe environment for everybody, especially for those who live on the streets. So in the 2024 budget, a significant portion of our undesignated funds, which is just over about $5.6 million of undesignated funds is what we're using. A significant portion of that is used towards the community investments here. And it would go towards crisis services, particularly those who are serving the homeless. We are providing $1,317,846 to the CARE campus. And if you don't know what the CARE campus is, it's a partnership that we have with Pennington County, which offers services to those afflicted with substance use disorders and/or mental health conditions. Also serves as our detox. So you need to know if somebody's on the street and they are intoxicated or they are not well, they have a place to go, and that is the CARE campus. We're also recommending $200,000 for the cornerstone rescue mission. And this is significant because they are, and this is an important fact, they are the only emergency shelter and official soup kitchen that we have in Rapid City. You know, an organization means something big to your community that if they were not there, you would greatly miss them. The cornerstone is that. Yes, they are under resourced and understaffed, but I have to tell you, the service they provide is significant. You have to be sober. They require accountability. These are all good things, but they also do a lot of case management and a lot of excellent work. I would encourage you, if it's been a while since you've toured the cornerstone and visited with the leadership there, I encourage you to do so. So I'm recommending $200,000 of our community investments be directed to the cornerstone rescue mission in 2024. We will evaluate their performance as we do with all nonprofits to make sure that it's meeting the needs of the city. So here's the deal, this is an important note for you to know, that if somebody is clean and sober but down on their luck and they want help out of homelessness, there is a service to help them out with the cornerstone rescue mission, as well as a couple of others we'll talk about in a second. If they are struggling with substance abuse and mental health conditions, there's also a place for them to go. So if anybody ever tells you that you have not done anything for the homeless, this budget will tell you, no, we've provided every option that we possibly can. That whatever route that someone is going, whether they just need a hand up and to level up out of homelessness in order to get back on their feet, there are services for them. And for everybody else who might be having difficulty, we do fund the CARE campus at a significant clip. And if you have not toured the CARE campus, I would encourage you to do so. It'll blow your mind what they're doing. And they're continually looking for ways to make it even better. They're looking at efficiencies and accountability there as well. I'm very encouraged by those conversations. I as well am going to have another tour of the CARE campus in the near future. If you want to tack on to that tour, let my office know. We'll let you know what time and date that is set up for. In addition, we are including $360,000 to go towards our ongoing contract with Journey On, as well as 75,000 to Volunteers of America. Now Journey On has been in the news recently. We know that there have been some challenges, but in talking to the police chief and to the, the boots on the ground, they still take off quite a bit of calls for service for the community. And whenever they've had challenges, they have risen to them. They have addressed those challenges. So just as the cornerstone, I said, we would monitor their performance over the next year. We'll continue to do that with Journey On as well. As soon as they are not providing those essential services to the city, we will look at doing something different. But for right now, we will continue that in 2024 if that is something you'd like to do. We will also continue to provide funding for WAVI, who provide emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence and assault, and 60,000 to Lifeways, who provide drug and alcohol treatment and prevention to youth. Because quite frankly, Rapid City's got to be for kids. And the best thing we can do is to reach young people before they have problems. And if they do, can we help them out at that stage in life before they end up in the system costing us all a whole lot more? So these are considered investments. This is in, the homeless services we're providing here is in addition to all the indirect costs that we have. But I'm telling you, it's a major drain on our community. I'm going to make a statement that's going to be taken two different ways, and I think I mean it in both ways. I want it to be harder to be homeless in Rapid City. Meaning, if you don't want to be homeless, there's organizations here that are doing great work to help you. If you do want to be homeless though, and you, and you reject all help, you cannot sleep in the public spaces. We have broken up many encampments since I've taken over as mayor. We will continue to do so. We will not make it more attractive and more comfortable. We want it to be safe for all, because here's the deal. You might think it's uncaring to not let people sleep in the middle of the park. But what's, what's uncaring is allowing those people sleeping in the park to be victimized and have crimes committed against them as well. That's not compassionate. So in the name of compassion, sometimes you have to have tough love. So we have tough love. We will enforce the law in Rapid City, but we will also direct them to services and we will put our money where our mouth is for 2024. Let's talk about public safety a little bit more with the Ignite program. This is a partnership between the city of Rapid City and Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Now this effort is designed to add accountability to offenders and reduce recidivism. One component is a community work program that we are looking to partner with them on. It'll be housed within the CARE campus. The sentenced offenders will work in the community while receiving, receiving Ignite services such as substance abuse counseling, job skills training, and ability for job placement upon completion of their sentence. They will be supervised directly by the county. That's why it's different than a work release where we have to supervise them. The county will maintain supervision of them, and they will work on building and grounds projects throughout the week, including Rapid City properties and projects. So the request for funding from the county, which I've agreed to with your permission, of course, is to fund them at $150,000 a year for the next two years, and we'll evaluate how it's going from there. And if you haven't noticed a theme, sometimes you have to start small before you expand things. So we're going to try some things new, but I'm not getting us so committed like a pig in breakfast. What we're going to do is start small. If it works well, we'll expand it. And if it doesn't, it could contract and we'll do something different. So here's the deal, Rapid City is full of promise and potential. We get to live where millions want to visit, and we're seeing that all the time. It, I have to tell you, it's really encouraging, the amount of people who are contacting Rapid City about doing business here. In about six weeks of me being mayor, I've talked to numerous organizations. I'm talking to another big one tomorrow. And it would blow your mind, the kind of conversations we're having. Now, I don't believe anything until they happen. That's why I won't say the names, because we will see. But I have some hopes, have some hopes that big things are on the horizon for Rapid City. The opportunity for our people to have good paying jobs, to have an affordable place to raise their family, a safe place to call home. That's what we want. That's what we're doing with this budget is we're trying to drive those kinds of results for Rapid City. That's why I ran. And so what I hope with this budget is it takes some of these priorities that I said we would do, and I actually put it in our budget and put numbers to it. Finally, I'll talk to you a little bit about some of the mayor office priorities. If I can find the page. We'll scroll up through here. And we need to leave by about 6:15 to allow time for the next meeting. So a couple of changes I made for starters. Instead of, economic development has historically been in a community investments budget, as you'll see shortly. I actually added that to the mayor's office budget because if we did not use Elevate for economic development purposes, we would have a mayor's office of economic development. So I housed it there just to have it as a placeholder. But it's still the same amount, 250,000 that we give to Elevate every year for economic development purposes. So far, they're doing a good job. We continue to evaluate their effectiveness, just as we do with all of our partners. And so long as they're doing a good job, we will continue to partner with them. A few of the projects that I'm, that we'll be working on, we're going to look to upgrade our website this next year. It needs it drastically. It needs to be more usable for the citizens. It needs to be more attractive for people looking to relocate here and do business here. When it, looking at developing a reading program to encourage early childhood education. We are going to develop a recognition program called the Mayor Salute, where we're going to find citizens doing awesome things. It's not a citizen of the month, it's going to be as needed. So it could be five in one month, or six in a week, or once every two months. Who knows? Big initiative is we're going to launch a community scorecard. And that's going to be the work where we can start to measure the impact of what we're doing around the community, both within the city by having key performance indicators. So that we know how we're, how we're doing and we have something to measure against, but also looking at how we're doing as a community. So that is something we're going to go after as well. And that includes making sure that we enhance our public communication. So I wanted to put that in there. All of these departments have a lot of goals and objectives. This is a 50 page booklet. You've never had this before. This is the first time. I hope this is an excellent resource for you. Take time to study it. One other really important note is tomorrow, August 22nd, you will receive a digital copy of my proposed detailed budget spreadsheet from the finance officer. That's the line item by line item budget. So I've tried to package it here for clarity sake, not just for you, but for your constituents, but also for full transparency. We're not going to wait for you to ask for it. We're just going to provide it to you. And hopefully this budget book will help, help you understand why we're doing some of what we're doing in, in the overall budget as a whole. And Daniel Ainsley has worked very hard to help. You won't know this, but this budget we're presenting to you, he and I have shaved millions off of this in a short period of time. I've already paid for my salary and then some, just so you know. But I hope that it reflects the conversations we've had. I hope some of this stuff sounds familiar to you because it's stuff we've talked about, either over the years for those of us who've served for years together, and over the recent weeks for those of us who just coming on board. Hopefully though, I hope it represents the priorities of Rapid City, of the citizens of Rapid City, of who you represent. And so I now put this budget into your hands. This is your budget. It's what I propose, what the city departments propose. The next thing that we're going to ask of you is you could either pass a first reading tonight or you could set, schedule your next meeting. We have to have two readings in before the end of September. That's all we ask. And so I will open it up for maybe a question or two before we get moving. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know there's going to be probably a few questions. I would recommend setting this to a special council meeting instead of doing first reading tonight. I think we're going to have a lot of questions on this. And that will allow us at the next meeting to ask those questions. I would recommend though, that anybody that has anything, either send those questions to the department heads or send them to the mayor.
Mr. Mr. President, may I interject?
Yes.
Could we request, I think it's good for you to have questions. For clarity sake, would you provide your written questions to Director Ainsley, just as a single point of contact? From there, he will distribute those questions and get the answers to them, perhaps even in writing. From there, he will distribute those questions and get the answers to them, perhaps even in writing. But if you put those in writing, it allows us to do the research and homework on your behalf. And that's what he and I have agreed to, that you direct all your written questions to Director Ainsley. He will distribute to the other departments as well as myself, if that's all right.
Absolutely. Why didn't you put that in your budget presentation?
I, I meant, I had a note to say that at the end.
Oh, okay. All right. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That being said, if there's any pressing questions, item two, discussion and direction. Does anybody have any direction on, I know we had a doodle poll on some days for a council meeting. Maybe I can ask Heidi, has there been anything, do you know of?
I, I could, I could answer that question, Mr. President. I believe that the majority of the council said next Monday evening would work best for a special council meeting based on the doodle poll.
Okay. Well, if we could get maybe that in a recommendation or a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Lehman.
Can I make a motion to set a special council meeting for the budget next Monday at five thirty?
You can, if you can get a second. We have a motion by Councilman Lehman, a second by Councilman Roseland. Sorry, Pat, I couldn't see you sitting over there. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. If I can get a motion to adjourn, got a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor? We are adjourned.